Fine.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
For joining us. Uh, I'm calling this meeting to order at five oh six P M. May we please have roll call?
Trustee Doclemore.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Ramos.
Present.
Trustee Little. Trustee Calhoun.
Present.
Student trustee Thomas.
Excuse. We will now have item one oh two, which is the pledge of allegiance. So could I have everybody rise for the living of the evening? And, uh, former trustee Charles Davis, can you lead us into the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes. Right, hand over your heart, please, right hand over your heart. Ready to begin?
Our pledge of allegiance, we honor the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, former. Charles Davis. May I please have item two, is approval of open session agenda, two point oh one, moved. Uh, it was moved by trustee Lopez, second by trustee Ramos. Is there any discussion? Trustee. Lopez, no discussion. Trustee Doclemore, no discussion. Trustee Ramos. For president Calhoun, no discussion. Please place your online vote. Or we do it verbally. Okay. We can do it verbally. Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Doclemore's?
Aye.
Ramos?
Aye.
Calhoun?
Aye.
Item three is request to address the board of trustees on agenda and non-agenda advantage. Has anybody signed up to speak at this time?
No, we have not received any requests.
Okay. Then we will go to item three point oh two. Compton Community College District Board of Trustees, future agenda items request. Board members, do you have any future agenda items request? Trustee Lopez.
I do not.
Trustee Doclemore.
No teaching in that item.
Trustee Ramos.
No item.
Board President Calhoun, no item. Item four is the oath of office for Compton Community College District Board of Trustees. Item four point oh one. Is for Barbara Jean Calhoun, trustee area two, to be sworn in by the honorable. Senators Stephen Brett.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Barbara Calhoun.
You solemnly affirm.
You solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
I take this oath, uh, this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations, we think.
Our purpose of evasion.
Our purpose of evasion.
And that I will, well and faithfully.
That I will, well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Good morning.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, I will read it before he leaves, because I know he has another, uh, event to go to. I just want to say thank you, number one, for swearing in. I'm trying to be good. And I want to thank you, because I've been knowing you for years. Uh, when he was with Edison, Gardena City Council, Juanita. All of that history, even the Gardena Jazz Festival, which still goes on right now today. And I just want to thank you for all of your support of me. And I want to thank you for the support that you have brought to the community of Compton when I was on the city council. And especially now, by being a board trustee. The money that you have brought to our college, for our brand new rooms, for our brand new buildings. And that big check that we took a picture with and cut the ribbon for this building right here. And it did not bounce. But you just did a bill for African-American institutions, colleges, I'm sorry, I had this building right here, but I forgot. But I want to thank you for always creating a space and being a friend to me. And the bills and everything that you did for our community. And I look forward to working with you again, so just call me an outside on the dot line to support you and endorse you.
Thank you.
And now we will have trustee Sonia Lopez, trustee area three. That will be sworn in by the board of supervisors. Holly J. Mitchell, who I've been knowing for a long time. But I'll let Sonia get into that.
Let her, let her do that.
There you go. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. It gives me great pride, um, to be here a second time. I had the privilege of administering, uh, trustee Lopez's first oath way back in twenty thirteen. And to see what you've been able to do in your service here since then. Uh, to be, uh, I think the youngest, the first Latina, the chair, the chair during very trying times for all of us, during the middle of the unprecedented public health pandemic. Your leadership, uh, to help this facility and this district regain accreditation, to be doing known. The fact that this institution is the first community college in L.A. County to build student housing, should be noted. As a part of your term on this board, and all the other amazing things this campus does, from the farmer's market, to Cow Fresh Relationship, all things that I hope that you are deeply proud of. Because we in the county, and the community, and the county, and the city of Compton are very proud of your leadership for having led so many of those efforts and many more. So without further ado. I state your name, raise your right hand.
I.
State your name.
Sonia Lopez, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, without any mental reservation.
Reservation or purpose of evasion.
Yes. And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties which I am about to enter. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, we are going to have a small reception. So if everybody would like, walk out this door right here into the next door right there. We're just having a small reception, just a small one, for about ten minutes, and then we're going to get back. Item five, this report from representatives and employees of organization. Five point oh one is associated senior doctor's report. Uh, guy, he's on his foot in the chair, no report. Uh, five oh two is academic center report, Sean Moore. He decides to leave, I'm kidding. I knew he was so sick.
So, uh, congratulations. Uh, thank you all for supporting member for your ongoing participation. Um, I also wanted to thank, uh, the district for, uh, the in-play holiday celebration was named a mania, I had some issues with my computer, but, uh, just wanted to say thank you. Um, I also wanted to acknowledge the hard work of our academic senate senators and their ongoing participation, just wanted to recognize it, very much appreciated. You know, we don't do the work alone, it's all the help of the senators. The academic senate was proud to recommend the adoption of the Compton College twenty thirty five master plan. And I want to thank all the different groups for their contributions to the document, which will benefit our consecutive interns as they move along. The academic senate summary decision letter was sent to the district today. On December fifth, twenty twenty four, the academic senate approved curriculum items, academic senate goals for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty six. Uh, recommendations for the hiring and priorization committee, and A R forty one hundred. Uh, one goal was to revise our bylaws and to foster the school, the academic senate recently approved the academic senate bylaw revision team. That's going to begin in spring twenty five. In addition, the academic senate approved a collaborative governance report recommendations, and they were shared and discussed during the December ninth Compton County Council meeting. Uh, I also, the hiring and prioritization committee recommendations included the following, tier one and tier two full-time faculty positions for the program. Uh, police, appeared, fire technology, culinary, business, and administration of justice. Uh, the academic senate budget and the annual plan will be convened during winter break. The vice president of the L.A. Regional Consortium, Art, uh, shared correspondence with Art and Governor Newsom's final framework for the master plan for career education. The plan, supported by new budget investments, will be easier for Californians to receive college credit for their real-world experience, especially veterans. And strength and coordination, creating pathways to fulfilling careers in California. The governor also announced the removal of the college degree or other educational requirements, supporting thirty thousand state jobs, along with a new goal to double that. I had the opportunity to be in the meetings about the South L.A. Enhanced Air Quality Climate Control and Indian Technology Initiatives grant. We received an update from the Community Change Grants Program Office, they received approximately twenty seven hundred applications for their and requesting more than forty billion in funding. Considering the selections already announced and awards made under the entire environmental and climate justice program, there is limited funding remaining for the awards. Overall, the number of applications and proposed values projects being evaluated significantly exceeds the small amount of funding still available. Uh, as a result, they strongly recommend they explore other funding opportunities for our projects in case our application's not selected. The academic senate president's winter release time was approved, thank you. Allowing me to be available for college, uh, colleagues and community work in the academic senate related tasks. Lastly, I wanted to wish everyone here, uh, and at Compton College, a wonderful holiday season, uh, with friends and family. So, thank you all, it's so much for your time.
And thank you. We have, uh, C C C, item five oh three, C C C F E Certified Employees Report. Doctor, that is hundred. We have item five oh four. C C C F E Classified Employees Report. And that's what, Mackenzie. Please tell me what you have seen at this time. Now, we are at item six, which is the annual organization meeting. This meeting is called as prescribed in Education Code Section seven two zero 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 for the purpose of organizing the board of trustees by the election of a president, vice president, and clerk. And to select a board member as a representative to the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization. Select a board member as a representative to the Los Angeles County School Trustee Association as prescribed in Education Code Section seven two four zero three. Select a board member to review nomination for membership on the California Community College Trustee Board and make a recommendation to the board of trustees. Appoint a secretary to the board, and the schedule meeting dates for twenty twenty five. So, six point oh one. Review Board Policy two seven one five Code of Ethics and Standards of Practice, Dr. Kirk.
So as a part of the board, um, retreat of August nineteen twenty twenty four, the board wanted the, uh, Code of Ethics Standards of Practice updated was approved by the board, was revised in October nineteen twenty four. And as a part of the organization meeting, to talk about, to review the policy as well, it's included in board docs. And then also I made a copy for the board members. What's important to note for the policy is that the board act as a whole, for making decisions. Uh, they're able to manage conflicts of interest in regards to, um, uh, if any relations, as regards to personal gain or personal conflict needs, as regards to any item that might be approved by the board, by your board's compensation expenses, as regards to being a board member. Having special get through groups as board members, utilizing appropriate channels for communication. Uh, may, like board members promote a healthy relationship, or relationship with the president, C E O of the institution. Maintain appropriate conduct at board meetings, uh, which include board members' participation, uh, and then also making sure that's effective and sustainable style. Maintaining confidentiality in closed session items. Exercise authority as a trustees, handle administrative matters for the district. Also participate in professional development activities, and give priority to the district and strategic partners. And violations of the board of the, of the Code of Ethics should be reported to the board president. So this policy was updated, and as a part of the organization meeting, the board leadership to review the board policy, uh, as raised to the Code of Ethics Standards of Practice.
So then. Item six point oh two. It is recommended that, that the board elect officers for the period of December seventeenth, twenty twenty four to the annual organization meeting in December twenty twenty five. Item six point. I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. I got three, I think that's not my job. I'm overstepping my bounds again.
I'm just pointing to a presentation, so for, um, item six point zero one, we're going to, uh, we're going to vote on these and have a discussion.
No, it's just a review, unless you want to, is there a comment you want to make, did the board approve the policy, uh, in that so?
Yes, if I, if I.
You owe, I'm sorry, is there any discussion on item six point oh one? Trustee Lopez.
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez. Trustee Doclemore.
Yes, um, as it relates to, um, uh, item six point zero one, the board policy here, um, twenty seven one five. Um, I would, as part of my discussion, I would like to make a, um, a recommendation and to add to, um, number. Number ten for professional development. Uh, I would like to ask the board to take, um, into consideration to, um, adding, uh, participation in fellowships um, under personal development, um, especially if there's, uh, if these particular fellowships will, um, enhance board members' knowledge, relates to enhancing knowledge, information, education, for the board of trustees, bringing this information back, um, to enhance things that are, um, that can possibly affect the college or the district, for example, things related to environmental and climate change. It was stated in our, um, in our bond, um, there was mention and reference of, um, some of the, uh, water. I think, uh, for an example, um, water education for Latino leaders is in one particular example of a board fellowship. I think that would be, um, very helpful and beneficial. And I think, um, the expense of participating in such a fellowship, um, could be part of the personal development for the board of trustees. So I would just like to add, maybe like in the future, when we are taking into consideration and revising this policy is to extend personal development to include, um, fellowship programs.
Ma'am, we're busy. Uh, so, I, I, I think that there's two, there's three, two conflicting policies that goes in this. One is that the board trustees, uh, reviewing this policy, made updates and reworked them. I think where you're going with this question is actually different policy. Board policy twenty seven forty is about board education, which talks about what type of best of, I, of way that board should be educated as they enroll in more, so that will be due in July, so if that's something that's of interest, but you do, that will go in that policy. But then also too, the board policy regards to board policy twenty seven thirty five. We talked about what program that board members are reimbursed for as they travel in education. So there's two other policies that have been viewed. This policy is basically broad in regards to best development, but it's actually what you're looking for is a review of board policy twenty seven forty and also board policy, official regulations, regulation twenty seven thirty five.
Okay.
Because twenty seven thirty five talks about what, how, what conferences and participation that the district will pay for.
And when is that for review again?
I don't know what that was, is going to be for review, I don't have it in front of me. But twenties, but we reviewed twenty seven forty in July of twenty twenty four.
Okay. All right, so I'll link that to come back again. And then twenty seven thirty five, or score one again?
That's reimbursement for the travel expenses and, I'm going to say, yeah, that's reimbursement for travel expenses, for board, board reimbursement for the travel expenses. Which talks about what conferences the board, the district will pay for. And as, and it's just to be mindful, uh, as a racist of this, is the, if you look at current budget and the, you have the current budget in regards to board education, we have to be able to look at budget-wise, if you add the fellowship or you add other things as well, what's the fiscal impact to this? Right, so I understand we talk about the adding additional arrangements, but then also the board policy regards for reimbursement. Those type of activities have to be included, but then also have to be budgeted. And so then, how do you budget, what's the amount, we have to look at what that change might be. And then how can you, uh, manage that as well? That's why I think that has to be a part of the conversation.
Okay. So should I already send my comment on, on twenty seven fifteen? Go ahead, on twenty seven fifteen? No, good.
If you're coming.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Trustee Lopez, any discussion?
No discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Ramos. Okay. So then. What was that board policy again? You said, Dr.?
Twenty seven thirty five.
And trustee Doclemore is talking about fellowship.
She's asking for fellowships, that they need to be included, but I, my response to that is that she's not only going to be reviewing twenty seven forty, but she also has to be doing twenty seven thirty five, as they turn around.
Or I get confused. So, fellowship could be a lot of things. Right, I think she was talking about, excuse me, excuse me. Was she talking about the water, uh, thing that you went to, Doclemore?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. No disrespect, I'm just, I'm just asking questions. What, what does a water fellowship, I'm just asking, have to do with a board of trustees? Just asking. I know that water is very important. I'm just asking, because I want to be, I want to be able to understand, what does a, a fellowship uh, going to the water thing have to do with a board of trustees? If you're not serving one of the water boards, like Central Basin, West Basin, and all like that, I'm just asking a question.
Uh, I think. I think. I think. Yeah. That's what. I mean. Um, well, I found it very, um, educational and beneficial to, um, understand, not just where water comes from, but, um, the journey that it takes, and also understanding the, um, the fragile infrastructure of our water.
Okay, so Central Basin, West Basin, W R D, and the Water Replenishing District, they do have committees if I'm not mistaken. And, I mean, I'm not knocking what you said about the fellowship, but I do know that each one of those entities, they have different committees. And if you know the person that represents your area on the water board, then there's a possibility that you could find out if there's a way that somebody from the community can be on one of those committees. I'm not saying we can't have a fellowship, I'm just throwing other things out about the water boards. And I think fellowships are very good. I just thought I would throw that out. Your work.
I am.
Next one is the overall. The ordinary social meeting, and I will.
Is that, which number is that?
I'm turning everything over to Dr. Kirk.
I'm too.
Okay, it, thank you, it applies to board policy twenty three zero five, annual social meeting. Uh, the board shall, uh, take action on the, so we begin by taking nomination for the board president. Uh, after which the board president will conduct the annual organization meeting, and the board president shall then conduct election for the vice president and the president. So at this time, I'm going to take nominations for the board of trustees for board president.
I nominate, uh, trustee Andres Ramos to be the president of the board.
A second.
A second.
So now we will take the, the motion by trustee, yeah, I will accept it by trustee Dr.
Okay, our trustee Calhoun.
That's right.
It goes, however you go.
The answer is yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Ramos?
Yes.
Trustee Lopez?
Yeah.
Trustee Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Are there any nominations for vice president?
I nominate trustee Sonia Lopez. For vice president. My second.
Do you accept? Can we just, can we just. Well, you the grip, no, I'm sorry.
Trustee Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Lopez?
Yes.
Trustee Ramos?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Calhoun?
Yes.
That is a unanimous vote?
And he's president then.
Are there any nominations for clerk?
I nominate, uh, Dr. Little, Dr. Curly Little for clerk.
I accept. Well, whatever the ex-president says, we will all. I now accept. Who was the second? Madam Vice President. Trustee Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Lopez?
Yeah.
President Ramos?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Calhoun?
Yes.
That is a unanimous vote?
Congratulations.
That concludes item six point zeros two. Moving on to item six point zero three. The board is to appoint a representative to the Los Angeles, Los Angeles County School Trustees Association for twenty twenty five.
Could you tell me who's on it right now?
That, that one was.
Oh, I'm here.
I nominate trustee Barbara Calhoun to serve on the Los Angeles County, you said you wanted to serve on that? School and Trustees Association for twenty twenty five. I made the motion. I accept. Trustee Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Lopez?
Yes.
President Ramos?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Calhoun?
Yes.
That is a unanimous vote.
Moving on to item six point zero four, Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization for twenty twenty five. Currently, we have, uh, trustee Dr. Moore. Are there any nominations?
I nominate, uh, trustee Dr. Moore. I second.
Do you accept?
I accept it.
Trustee Dr. Moore?
Aye.
I mean, yes. Trustee Lopez?
Aye.
President Ramos?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Calhoun?
Yes.
That is a unanimous vote.
Moving on to item six point zero five, it is recommended the board appoint a member to review nomination for membership. And the California College Trustees Board and make a recommendation to the board of trustees for twenty twenty five.
I nominate Vice President Lopez, trustee Lopez.
I second.
Can we have the vote?
Trustee Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Lopez?
Yes.
President Ramos?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Calhoun?
Yes.
Unanimous vote?
Moving on to item six point zero six, it is recommended the board appoint the secretary to the board for the period December seventeen, twenty twenty four. Through the organization meeting in December twenty twenty five.
Fourteen year straight record.
I will nominate Dr. Keith Curry to serve as secretary of the board and I second it. Do you accept? Do you accept?
Trustee Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Lopez? Uh, President Ramos?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Calhoun?
Yes.
That is a unanimous vote.
Moving on to the item six point zero seven, board trustees regularly.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
May you date for twenty twenty five.
Oh, yeah. I would like to know if the board would really love to change their meetings from Tuesday to Monday. So moved. I'm making a motion, but, oh, I second it. Oh, I, I thought you were asking a question.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun and seconded by Dr. Little. Now it's open for discussion. Dr. Little?
I have no discussion. I'm, um, very willing to move to Mondays and alternate days for the holidays.
Trustee Lopez?
No discussion.
Trustee Dr. Moore?
Yes, I just, just point a clarification, moving the meeting back to Monday is not, would not interfere. With us getting the, the agenda and all those other things.
You didn't buy, uh.
I'm just.
The deadline is Friday instead of Saturday. It is the deadline of Tuesday, but we will make sure that it is posted before the, uh, September.
Oh, no discussion at all.
Can we have the vote, please?
Trustee Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Lopez?
Yes.
President Ramos?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Calhoun?
Yes.
That is a unanimous vote.
That concludes, uh, item six. Moving on to item seven, board report. Dr. Curry, happy holidays. Trustee appears, Dr. Little?
I want to say happy holidays. Thanks again to the entire administration, the faculty, um, our students. And I want to again thank our community for coming out to support, uh, this year's Compton Christmas Parade. We were very well represented, not only in participation and all the entire staff, Lou and Patty. All of the staff who drove us, um, but we had so many current and alumni students throughout the parade route. Who were proud to show their gear, to wave their hand. And it just reiterated the importance of this college and the community aspect of it. And again, want to thank entirety of the campus because we've had much more community engagement, uh, events. We know that that is on top of all of the regular things that we do, but it really, really makes a difference. Um, when people feel a connection and look forward to next year.
Trustee Lopez?
I want to thank everyone that came out tonight to celebrate our swearing in for trustee Calvin and myself. Um, happy holiday. Uh, again, I would, um, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy New Years, happy holidays. Um, and also like what has been said before, I would like to thank the faculty and staff, um. For, um, an amazing year, just everything that you guys have done. Um, always being to the call, always being very, um, pleasant and accommodating. Um, and, uh, what else? Yes, happy holidays and time zones. I'm just trying to get up. Um, that's all, that's all right.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everybody. Thank you for all the ones that came out, uh, for the swearing in. I'm looking forward to, uh, four more years and, uh, I just want to, uh, say this. Um, I made, uh, a statement at our board meeting and I just wanted to finish it up. Uh, I know the professors know it, I know the adjuncts know it, but students talk to students. And they tell us what teacher to have a class with. And what teacher not to have a class with. And, uh, it's really disheartening when a student, uh, comes up and tells people. Don't take a class with so and so, or so and so, and so and so. And I just tell them, go to the ASG. Do your, what's that stuff? Uh, agreements? I tell them like that. But I have found out some things on my own because I am a student here and, uh. I do know what teachers not to take. Uh, on certain classes. Now, we have some great teachers. We have some great teachers. We have some great staff. But everybody can be great. So I give kudos to the instructors, the professors, the adjuncts. Who all teach great classes and the students are loving them. And so I don't give out names and I'm not going to give out names. That is not my place. I just tell them to go to the ASG and do their agreements, right? And so, uh, I know that, uh, we have asked more than one occasion. To possibly have a, a, a survey at the end of the semester without putting a name. To that survey, just what were your thoughts or your classes or whatever, what do you think would be better, whether, without doing anything like that. I'm not sure if faculty or staff are, uh, up to that where the students do a survey on their experience. That's just it, their experience. I don't want their over the head of whatever, but, uh, without naming any teachers. Because as a board, we need to our retreat, we do a survey. And we don't name any names, just one question and make a comment and you go on. They don't know who we're talking about. It just helps us to better understand our goal as a board member. And how we can do that. And that's all. But other than that, please have a very happy holiday. Season's greetings and I'm looking forward to seeing y'all because I got one more class to take. I am taking biology. I am still a Compton student. I don't care what the students say. I am still coming to Compton College. I have one more class to take for my AA and I will be graduating, woo, woo, next year.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much and everybody, be blessed. Drive home safely.
Now, uh, as per my report, I just wanted to, uh, remind the trustees that we have, uh. The triple C T conferences in January that everyone is approaching, thinking you have some of your, your information. And then we have, uh, the D C one. So we did have a, a lot of money for that. I, I wanted to thank everyone that showed up and all the staff that participated and making it happen. And I wanted to congratulate again, um, trustees Calvin and trustee, um, Lopez for, uh, their, sort of, the election. And happy holidays. I mean, moving on to item eight, our next scheduled board meeting, now it's, uh, we moved it to Mondays, so that's.
Dr. Mark, can you go up to the?
It, it heights the subhead.
Can you go up to the, uh, six point zero seven? Six point zero seven, can you open that, please?
It's January thirteen, twenty twenty five. Begins at five P M and open session begins at six P M. The meeting is now adjourned at six oh eight.